So that's for now.
All right.
How many are we allowed?
Twenty-five, and that's where you're at right now.
You're a ventriloquist.
All right, well, good evening, everybody. Thank you.
There you go.
Thank you for coming. I'm going to open up the zoning board of appeals, village of Webster, December 7th. Did I turn my recorder on? December 17th. You have the honor of a full board, and I will also tell you, this is the first time that the combined planning and zoning board is going to meet, so there is no more planning board. There is just one board which will address all of the issues that have been before us. We have five members here tonight, along with our two applicants. The five members will be the only members who will be allowed to vote. If we were short one, we would install one of our alternates in here, and then we would continue to have a full board. Why is that important? That's important because by code, we require three votes or a majority of those voting members to pass any resolution. And by the way, if I only had three people here, I'd be in trouble, because if any one of them had an issue with this, we wouldn't be able to do anything with it. All right. Also, I'll tell you a little bit about how we're going to do this tonight. First of all, I am truly pleased to see this many people here. We typically don't get that many, and thank you for taking an interest in the village and our local government. And I will give each and every one of you a chance to tell us whatever it is you want to say for, against, or otherwise on this project, and I have no time limit on the end of this. What we will do is we will pull up the applicant, and I will read the applicant's application here in just a minute. We'll pull up the applicant. I will ask him to tell us about his plan, tell us what he is seeking. I will ask him to tell us why he needs the variance and why we should be inclined to grant that variance, because he will need a variance, maybe two, I am told, wait. The board will then ask questions based on what we have heard and what we know and what we see, and then we will close that portion. Then we will ask you to come up one at a time. As you come up, come to this podium that the gentleman is standing at right now. Just give us your name and your address is all we need, and just state your concern, one way or the other. There really typically is no conversation there. What we want to do is we want to hear from you. In addition to that, and I will read right after I have read in the applicant's request here, we have some mail-in information that we got from our citizens on this, and I'd like to see that read into the record. I'll make sure that Joe, who's our secretary, puts these into the record as they are, but I'm going to essentially say who they are, where they are, and what their concern was. I'm not going to read each and every one, but I have it here if anyone wants to see it. So having done all that, hopefully it's pretty clear. What we have here tonight is one item on the board's agenda. That item is B E and B M E Associates on behalf of Pride Mark Homes under contract for 44.1 plus or minus acres on the southeast corner of Route 250 and State Road, tax ID The applicant seeks overall preliminary and subdivision, preliminary subdivision plan approval to develop those 44.1 acres plus or minus for the purpose of 124 townhouse lots or units and a proposed community center. The applicant is seeking also relief from the zoning regarding the front yard setback. Front yard setbacks are required to be 40 feet. In this case, the applicant is requesting that that be adjusted to 25 feet, so they'll ask for a 15-foot variance. And proper code there for the village on the variance setback is 175-15C. The property currently as it sits is zone R2 9.6. So with that, tell us who you are, tell us what you've got, what you're asking for, and any information you can bring to us, along with this being as complete as possible.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Link Sweetrock with B M E Associates. Also with me tonight is Jim Barbado from Pride Mark Homes. We're here tonight requesting overall preliminary subdivision review and site plan review for, like you said, 124 townhouse units. These are for-sale units. Each one is, there's 12 three-unit buildings and 22 four-unit buildings arranged around here. What we're proposing is dedicated roads to be dedicated to the village. One access drive off of State Road, which would require a permit from the Monroe County DOT, and then another access point out to New York State Route 250, which would require a permit from the DOT. The roads are proposed around to provide circulation and two access points to serve the 124 units. Each unit has a driveway along with a two-car garage. We've also have sidewalks on one side of the road all the way around through the project. The utility information, the drainage was very, we did a very comprehensive drainage, and we worked, we worked with the village to look at the drainage out here. What we've done is there's a culvert that comes across State Road here. We've collected it all in a stormwater management facility, and we're conveying it down across the easement to the southeast, where it's conveyed over through easements, piped over through easements, and it discharges to a swell that's over by the school. The drainage has been designed to collect all that runoff from the north and things and convey up to, through property to that area. We did a comprehensive stormwater management analysis, including drainage infrastructure, designing everything needing New York State DEC requirements and provided that with our application. The sewer, we're providing sanitary, we're connecting to existing sanitary sewer on State Road and serving all the lots with a gravity sanitary sewer that'll serve the homes. We're also proposing public watering. We'll be connecting the watering at State Road and eventually looping it out to Route 250. The phasing of the project, we're proposing three phases for the project, four phases for the project. So phase one would be off of State Road, and then phase two would be completing construction towards 250, and then phase three would be back over towards the pond, and then phase four, that in the southeast corner is the last phase. We're proposing a community center with parking that's sort of centralized for the use of the residents, and we have also worked with the village on reviewing the sewer capacity in this area. We provided a sanitary sewer analysis with our engineer's report. We also worked with the village on traffic study that was requested on behalf of the boards, I believe, and we coordinated those with the county and the state. The county and the state have both indicated that based on the number of trips being generated from the project that it didn't warrant the traffic study. However, we understood that the village was wanting to make sure we had looked at traffic, so we did an analysis of traffic and provided it to the village as well as to the state and to the county for their highway networks. And based on their review, they've reviewed both the drainage report and the traffic study, and at this point, they've, they said their next step, our next step with the state and the county would be to submit for highway work permits, basically. So they are satisfied with the drainage and the traffic report that we provided. We've also received comments from the county. I know that it was referred to county planning. We've looked at those comments, and we begin addressing them, and we feel confident that we can work on addressing those comments as part of this review process. So with that, I think that's sort of it from the technical side. I'm going to let Jim talk to you about the architecture and the building of the three and the four star, three and the four unit building, as well as the community center, I guess. We got some pictures of those here.
Thank you. Jim Barbado from Pride Mark Homes. Just want to talk a little bit about the project and the community. I'm not sure if people are familiar with, but we're currently building Arbor Creek, which is right down State Road. We've been under construction since 2015. It's 116 units, and the community has developed very quickly. We're actually in our last phase now, building that will finish up in 2021. There's eight townhomes left to sell. As Link mentioned, everything is for sale. There's no rental. We created HOA Home Owners Association that takes care of all the exterior maintenance, as well as the grounds, the snow removal, landscaping in the buildings. So it's designed, really it's catered to the needs empty nesters and seniors that are downsizing, which has really been our target market, and that's who we've, who we've been building for. The homes will start at approximately 275. The range of square footage is 1,400 to 2,000 square feet. The average price at Arbor Creek has worked its way up through the years to approximately, in the mid 300s, about $350,000. As Link stated, it's a community center. A community center is really, it's been pretty quiet for the COVID year, so not a lot of gathering, but it's designed for community gatherings, whether it's gatherings of just the residents themselves, or if a resident wants to reserve it for a private function. And there's also exercise, exercise room, a couple of bathrooms, a kitchen, and a large back patio and deck area, or a covered patio in the back. As Link said, there's sidewalks throughout the community. We looked at traffic, we looked at everything, and we're very confident that there's still a lot of demand and need for this type of housing in the area, given that we're currently building, and we've been moving through that community very quickly. So with that, Link and I'll step back and answer any questions when they come up.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
One thing I forgot.
So the reason, just, we didn't really cover the request for the setback. I just wanted to say that. So we're requesting a reduction from 40 to 25 foot. Basically, that's similar to what Jim has at his Arbor Creek and his Arbor Ridge projects, which are similar and in the area. So basically, the real reason, I mean, it works because it allows us to pull the units up further to reduce grating and provide more open space in the rear of these. It also, each unit has a two-car garage, and with the 25-foot setback, you really have room for four cars, two cars in the garage and then two cars in the front. So you basically still have room for four cars per unit. It reduces pavement, allows us to reduce grating, like I said, and just, and it works for, you know, what you've seen for what we need for this type of parking and this type of unit. So it provides more than adequate parking and gives you the room. And it, you know, it's also sort of goes a little bit green, because we're reducing the amount of pavement that we need in asphalt, and we're still meeting the requirements of parking for the residents. So I just wanted to, forgot to add that.
Okay. So the reason then is, is staying right with the variance. The reason is because it's what you did at Arbor Creek?
No, the reason is it allows us to reduce pavement, and it allows us to provide more green space in the rear of the units.
Okay. Now, if you're done, I'll start over with a few questions, comments. First one, there was a comment made by the other gentleman, and I apologize for not remembering your name.
Sure, it's Jim Barbado.
Thank you, Jim.
You're welcome.
You mentioned that there was going to be a homeowners association that was going to take care of a snow removal.
Yes.
Snow removal from what?
All the driveways. So the landscape.
So it's the driveways, it's not the road?
Yes.
It's the road to dedicate?
Yes.
Or the plan is to dedicate the road?
Yes.
And for those of you who don't know, what that means is they're going to build the road, in layman's terms, they're going to build the road, give it to the village, and the village is going to maintain it. All right. Little bit of an expansion. I took through, looked through this, and I will confess to not being an engineer. As a matter of fact, that much data typically puts me to sleep, but I know what I want to see, and I know what we need. Talk to me a little bit about that traffic study, because I didn't get the idea that you went out, hired someone, and did a traffic study within the last 60 days. And the reason I ask that is because when we get to the public portion, we have not only written comments, but I suspect we have a few folks here who are going to address some concerns around traffic in the area, and I just want to make sure that we have addressed that appropriately. What did you do, and what are you going to do?
Well, I can answer that. So the traffic study's not in that report. The traffic study was requested from the village after that report was submitted, and then Jim hired us, Traffic Consultant, SRF Associates, after the engineer's report, and we submitted that separately to the village.
Okay.
So you might not have seen the traffic study, but we did traffic, it's a separate consultant, it wasn't B M E. SRF did the traffic study and prepared a traffic report.
Okay. Because I've got an idea in my mind what a traffic study is, and it may or may not be correct, but I'll tell you what I'm thinking is, I'm thinking that you hired somebody, they went out there and counted cars by whatever, counted traffic, counted times of day, times of week, and gave us an idea of what 124 units, so 250 additional cars may be leaving the house in the morning, maybe not. So is that what I can expect to see, or are we going to use existing data from state and county?
We're going to use existing, I believe they used existing traffic counts from the state and the county, because you're not going to get an accurate reading of cars right now during COVID. So they, I used, I believe they used the state and the county, they coordinated with them to get the traffic counts, you know, for the last three years, I believe, of data, and then they use that peak flow. They project the traffic from our development, and then they add a peaking factor to that, and then they figure out which way the traffic, the background traffic is moving, and then they add the percentage of the traffic that's coming from our site to that background traffic, and then they analyze how it affects the roadways.
Okay. An idea of what you've got.
So that's, that's how they, that's how they perform it, and then they provided it to that, and then they provide it to the, to the governing, you know, people that are, people who own the road. So they provide it to the state and to the county for their review, and then we provided it to the village as well.
That's an accurate random reading, right? This is the one that was passed out today?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, that one, okay. Sidewalks all the way around is what I heard, and I'm a big fan of that. I think people ought to be out walking around, getting to know their neighbors and seeing things and when they can. I see a sidewalk only on the first ring. I don't see it in the other ones. Maybe it's there. Is it, is it all the way around one side is what I heard, one side all the way around in each and every one?
Yes, it's on both rings.
Okay, so I get better glasses. All right. It's okay.
It might, it's sort of hard, it's sort of hard, because of that scale, it's a five-foot sidewalk, so it's sort of.
But it's around the, it's around the outside of the ring towards State Road, if you would, and then it's on the inside of the southern ring.
So somebody's got to suffer. It's not going to be on both sides.
And then it's also leading out towards 250 as well.
Fair enough.
So.
Well, we also, we tried to, you know, we need to, we put the sidewalk on the water main side of the road so that it's not getting manholes and stuff in it. So you've got the sanitary and the storm on one side and the water main on the other, and we put the sidewalk on the water main side, and that, that helps us too, because it allows us to make sure that, you know, that we're meeting, we're meeting the sidewalk that I wanted, that I was telling you about, the sidewalk depth that we are.
Fair enough. Okay. If you are granted a 15-foot variance from 40 feet down to 25 feet for your front yard setback, how long will that make the apron of the driveway? And by apron, again, not an engineer. Sidewalk to garage entrance, what's the length?
26 feet.
Okay. So it would not fit two cars end to end outside of the drive, outside of the garage?
It'll fit two next to each other, and then two in front, and two in the garage, because they each have a two-car garage.
Yep.
Target audience for this project, do you know who it is?
Yeah, as I mentioned, it's really empty nesters and seniors. Not, that's all we've had so far at Arbor Creek, and we've sold over 100 of them.
Okay. My last concern for now, before I give it to somebody else. I'm looking at this, and some people do crap in their garage, some do not. I personally think that you shorted them on the driveway. I also think the last thing I want to see, personally, when I go down the street, is cars, because they're going to take a foot or two. Your average car is 14.7 light for a full-size car, 14.7 feet. All I'm going to see is cars going down the street. It's not a great sight for me, but we'll, we'll set that aside. If I have guests, worthy bargain, because we've brought things together kind of close, if we put them in the road, what's going to happen is I'm either going to block somebody's driveway across the street from me, trust me on personal experience here, or we're going to be parking, one, one house takes four or five cars, they go all up and down the drive, all up and down the road, trying not to block anybody's driveway. I don't see any parking for additional guests.
To end with a couple of your comments, the first one was regarding people parking out in the driveway. We have, like I said, we have a lot of experience with this type of housing, and Arbor Creek's not our first community like this, and we've had zero issues as far as cars being an issue parked outside, anything unusual compared to what you normally see. Many of our residents only have one car, and they have a two-car garage as well as a two-car wide driveway, so parking has not been an issue at all. As far as guests, we can look to add some supplemental parking to the plan where it makes sense to add some extra spaces, but we don't see a lot of large gatherings in the homes. We also have a community center, which if somebody's going to have a larger function, they typically bring it to the community center, and there's a parking lot and a large space. These homes are, you know, for most people are a significant downside where they're not having big gatherings, they're typically going somewhere else.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm going to ask anybody else on the board, your comments, your questions, your desires, your concerns.
I'll take a crack at it. All right, in no particular order, I color-coded your site plan, and a couple of things jumped out at me that I don't particularly care for, and it's the way the site is constructed in such a way that when you have, you're developing section one, I understand obviously you need the stormwater management facility to be constructed, and then you're creating a U-shaped road. That would end, okay? Whereby you have a short section that is designated as Road C, that in essence brings up, and that's proposed for section three, not for section two. So are you telling me that the community center is not going to be built until section three? So every resident in sections one and two is short shrift until section three is constructed? I would much prefer to see the loop built that prevents the road from being turned into a U initially, so it's a loop, simply for emergency access, delivery access, resident That is a first concern in conjunction with the community center. I would much prefer to say, if I were to become a resident, I'm getting, I'm pushing the envelope where, I would be a potential resident, I don't want to wait to see the community center built in section three, I want to see it built right away, because if I'm living in section one, I want to have that amended, putting that out.
You want to? Yeah. We can, we can look at reconfiguring the sections a little bit, and probably what would get different here, the, I understand it makes it so that it's in the center, so it may delay it for a couple of years from being in the beginning of the project, but part of what I wanted to accomplish was to put that community center really in the middle of the community, where you typically see it right at the entry by the road, and I wanted to create a little bit easier walkability for the community center, so that somebody who lives at the opposite end of the neighborhood would never walk there. They'd always get in their car and drive. So I wanted to put it in the middle, and that inherently put it into a later section, but my goal was to make it so the overall community, long-term, is more walkable, that people want to gather towards the middle of the community versus sticking it to a far end. So I understand it's a little bit of a concern of the timing, but I really wanted to get it in the middle, because I liked the idea of having the community center central, led to by side ones.
Right, oh no, I understand conceptually, the centralized community center is better, but build it initially.
And going back to, going back to your, the access, I think one of the reasons why the, we laid the sections out is because we wanted to get the second access out to 250 with section two. So we were trying to, for the same reason, emergency vehicles, they sort of, we wanted to build, we wanted to get in off of state, because that's per utilities, that's where the sewer is, that's, we got to build the pond, we got to do that. And then the next thing is he really wanted to try to get out to 250 with that second phase, so you get two points of access.
Right.
With the next phase. And then, we were looking at it, we actually talked about it, when we were looking at it, we were like, and by doing this phase first and that phase first, it really makes it a lot for that second phase to get that clubhouse where we, at least where we've sited it, you know? It started to get a really big section, you know?
Yeah, obviously, we're trying to time a little bit of the, you know, the money going in as far as infrastructure, because we don't need 40 or 50 units in a first section. So we're trying to make it make sense to how they're going to be absorbed.
And also, what, how, the way, if it goes sort of the same speed as Arbor, you're doing a section almost every?
Yeah, we, we.
Two years or something?
Arbor Creek, pre-COVID, will be a little bit off of that number this year, but we, we were, we were moving pretty good. We're closing 26 to 27 units per year, homes per year. So it's, it's not a long time before you get to section three or, you know, or there.
Yeah, I understand a lot of, still putting forth.
Yep.
My personal opinion, correct? Because if you're going to build a U, then just link the two together. I mean, you don't have to build a townhouse or anything, link the road. Putting it out.
Yeah, but you have to, you have to put all the utilities in, you have to put everything under the ground if you build the road, or you got to rip the road back up, so it just, you know, we definitely, we definitely are hearing, you know, we played with it a lot when we were trying to figure out the phasing, so.
I'm glad you brought that up, because we, there have been occasions in historical past whereby, and I'm not putting you in the same bucket as anyone else, but if there are ever a problem whereby construction is halted, delayed, stalled, or technically abandoned, then now you have a partially constructed site, you don't have erosion, you have sidewalks to nowhere, you have no lighting, you have nothing technically fitted. So one of the strong motivations for approval on these types of projects is the infrastructure gets put in, all of it, because if you stop for whatever reason, everybody who lives there gets screwed because they're living in an unfinished project, potentially screwed.
Well, I mean, obviously.
That hasn't been a problem.
I don't, I hope that you look at who the applicant is, and that, you know, we've, we've been in business since 1972, and we've never abandoned a project, we've never halted a project, we've never fell down on a project. I've never seen anyone put in a project of this size without phasing the infrastructure. I can really think of one, and that's Costello's project, the Reserve in Brighton, which is halted, installed, and sitting there, half-built. So we have no intention of halting or stopping, and we've never done that since 1972, and we know business, and we would be putting our business at risk if we put in all of that infrastructure at once and had 124 units in the ground, where you're only doing about 25 units per year. It'd be a really big mistake, and that'd be a way to put my company at risk. It'd be a really big mistake and that'd be a, a way to put my company at risk is to do infrastructure that way. So we would phase it just from a safety standpoint.
And I think the remedy, the remedy to that is let us look ready for infrastructure.
Absolutely.
You know, provided all those things are replaced and
Yes.
you're sure it's safe out there, obviously your reputation is before you, so I get all that, but, you know, just to alleviate that concern, you know, for potential residents, if, you know, residents that will eventually move into the facility while the place is under construction, future sections being constructed, these are all valid concerns, so. You know, obviously I just wanna plant that in your head that, that it's gonna be something that will have to be seriously looked at and agreed upon, let us look ready for all future constructive development.
Sure.
Uh, now, uh, it's obviously phased construction is each subsequent phase contingent on one hundred percent sale of the previous phase, or?
No, I always just make sure that we have enough, um, enough, you know, lot inventory ahead of us. So that we, we'll be halfway through a phase, but I wanna make sure going into the next selling season that I have at least a full year's worth of sales ahead of me. Um, so that we, that's why we phase it that way. And the challenge as a builder, and I'm not sure if you realize it, but we start getting taxed not on raw land, but on every lot that is there, once we put the infrastructure in, even though we don't build on it. So there aren't many businesses that get taxed on unsold inventory. So if we create a hundred and twenty-four subdivided lots, we start paying taxes on day one. So I would pay for the, every lot taxes until I reach the end of the project, which wouldn't make any sense for us.
You also get a partial assessment depending on how far each building is in construction stage.
Yeah, even though nobody's living there and nobody's drawing any services, if a building is half-built and it's worth three hundred thousand dollars, we start paying based on a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, even though it's a construction site. So it's a challenge that we work with.
Um, okay, now, these, all these facilities are proposed as for sale only, no rentals at all?
Right, no rentals.
Okay. Um, now this is just a personal question, does that allow customization of every unit per future owners?
Uh, the owner, we, we have, um, five to six floor plans that we work from. So there's no customization of the exterior of the building other than
I mean interior.
Interior, they can do what they want. So we, we allow them to do some minor customization of the framing and the walls, but then they make all their own selections as far as the kitchen and the bath and the tile and the hardwood and everything they wanna choose inside.
Okay, very good. And, um, I'll, I will concede my time and let someone else know.
Okay.
I just wanna, you really what Mark brought up initially, I live in a similar complex and the supplemental parking is important. I mean, even if you have, uh, you know, uh, a couple siblings over, whatever, two, three, four cars can, can fill up. So the supplemental parking, and plenty of it are nearby each section, is very important, I think.
Well, take a look at that, where would you work it in?
Well, one of the benefits of having a dedicated, those people can park on the road. As opposed to a private road where they can't because that becomes a fire apparatus access.
And the dedicated versus private, in our experience, there is no tax break for somebody living on a private driver's, a dedicated road. So they're paying the full taxes of every resident that's paying within the town. And because there's townhouses, there's more residents per footage of road. So the top, the village is actually getting more tax base for the amount of road it maintains. So, to have these folks come in here and pay the, pay the full tax bill, but not have the benefit of the dedicated road and services, doesn't seem at all fair to the future residents. So you're trying to build something that people wanna live in and this produces more tax revenue than most streets because there's more homes per line of footage of road. So we've, in our experience, in the town that we work in, our dedicated roads in Arbor Creek, their dedicated roads at Arbor Ridge in Penfield, we do it that way because they don't get a break on their taxes to offset the cost of services.
What's your estimate of the impact this, uh, will have on this Webster School system?
Well, from experience at Arbor Creek, we don't have one school age child in the community. So there's no guarantee, but I know the impact will be very minimum if there are kids in the, in the community. I'd imagine it'd be very few because of this demographic.
If you did not get the setback variance, what does that do to the number of units? Does that make the plan non-viable? What's the unit reduction if you don't get the variances for the, for the driveway setback?
We really haven't looked at taking it apart, um, to stretch all the driveways out.
I mean, really, it's, I think the unit count would be very similar if you're just adding pavement and, uh, we're adding earthwork.
And squeezing backyards.
And squeezing the backyard. I don't think, I mean, from a, I mean, mainly all of these, and I'm asking for twenty-five foot, but the plan is showing thirty foot on one side of the road and twenty-five foot on the other. So I'm, uh, not asking for twenty, I'm not asking for fifteen foot everywhere. But I'm just, the, the max I'm asking for is twenty-five. So, what we're trying to do is do thirty on the sidewalk side and do twenty-five on the non-sidewalk side. So you actually, you know, I could give you more, but you actually have more than the, um, twenty-five feet because you also got the right-of-way. So I'm just telling you what you got from the right, the, from the right-of-way back with the twenty-five foot, you have enough width for a car. But on the non-sidewalk side, you have enough room for another car in front of it. Cause you have the right-of-way to the, to the, to the gutter line.
Like, how wide are the bedrooms?
Um, we typically, sixteen-foot wide garage door, we make the driveway seventeen feet wide, so it's a foot wider than the door.
So you can have parks on the
Parks, yeah, they go side by side with no trouble.
And how many units or bedrooms?
Uh, they're, they say two to three bedroom plans. Our three-bedroom plan is really a two-bedroom with a flex room, that most people don't finish it as a bedroom. And in, in most cases, we see typically two bedrooms and an office or a study, or a master bedroom and a guest room or a study.
What is the approximate, uh, square footage?
Uh, they're ranging from fourteen hundred to about two thousand square feet. Two thousand's on the higher end, the typical unit is probably seven, seventeen to eighteen hundred down to fourteen hundred. We have one that expands out to two thousand.
Well, is the church and the UTS house on the corner, are they in Sutcliffe?
Are they in Sutcliffe? I don't believe so, no, we don't have any, uh, properties that are in Sutcliffe, in the village.
I guess they know the proximity to, uh, Manhole or anything, uh, sanitary was.
There's another sewer on Lincolnshire, I think.
Yeah. I remember
Goes, it's, it goes a different direction, it goes down.
Well, I'm thinking I'd like to see maybe an easement or something to the south. I don't know if, uh, I know the sewer's not that deep, but if anything decided to happen in the town of Penfield, at least have access to a sewer, because there's something on two fifty.
I was looking at some plans for Harold's Christian home in Westwood. And it showed both the church and the home and both in the sewer.
Okay, I just didn't know, I figured it was on Sutcliffe.
So I'm gonna
Probably Yeah. I agree, we could just come in and rent a lot of them.
They'll probably have the pump anyways, but we can get them to
At least there's an access.
Yeah.
To something, I agree, they probably have the pump for it.
And these do not have basements, okay?
Yes, they do.
They all be.
They do?
Yes.
I'm just kidding.
Are you gonna have to lift them up a little bit because of the substructure or the geology of the area?
Yeah, we've set them all based on rock elevations. And that's another reason for the setback is by setting them up on rock, we're filling the front and we're walking the rear out. The further back we push the units, the more we gotta fill in the front. So, what we're trying to do is, cause they're, cause we, the market, you know, he needs, he really needs to do basements with these type of units, we're setting them on rock at the back, walking them out at grade and then filling the front and the road. So by reducing the setback, we were able to keep them a little closer to the road and reduce the fill a bit.
So we're going also into that, does that mean with the earthwork now, is it gonna have to bring in fill in order to do that?
We have to bring in fill now.
Really, we wouldn't need fill until the last section. The first three sections will balance out and we would need fill in, in the last section.
Yeah, right now it's balanced till section four, basically.
What's, what type of soil do you have over there?
Um, it's some, uh, sandy loam and some silts. But, uh, it's, um, we know we're gonna have to, I mean, we're, we're definitely working on, on a lot of drainage improvements, but we're hitting the rock and we, we've missed some, we had some various soil types, so. We did have some, there was some sands and silts out there, um.
So it sounds like you're gonna buy enough like six inches of topsoil for seeding?
We're putting a foot back in.
It's just because we're not gonna export, we're not gonna export topsoil off when we need earth at some point, so we'll put an extra topsoil within our grading.
So the plan is to, to, to strip it and replace twelve inches, basically, that'll help us bring it, the site up to grade.
You gotta dig out the pond, I'm just wondering if that topsoil, if that's what they can use.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna try to use as much of the topsoil as we can.
So Link, I, I know there was talk of, like, the Army Corps and the wetlands and there were, I believe the Army Corps determined that they were non-jurisdictional?
Yeah, the, um, the Army Corps, we walked it with the Army Corps in, uh, in August. Um, they walked it and they reviewed all the, all the drainage out there and they determined that, uh, they were isolated wetlands and not regulated. Um, so, um, we provided the delineation report and that's, uh, we're waiting for the, the determination from the Corps, but, uh, that was the, that was the indication, that's how the report was created and submitted to the Corps.
So they, they took out the navigable waterway along Webster Road there?
Correct.
As, as long as we're, I'm, and Michael, you're gonna rely on you to help me with this. I keep telling you I'm a layman, but I just kinda drive by and I see what I see. That area is pretty wet in the spring, particularly where you've got the duck pond. And is that, and I know that some of the, I think, some of the shans, the existing shans track goes over that way.
Comes, goes this way.
Uh, actually I was thinking across the street.
Oh, this comes across the, this comes across.
And then there's a swell that comes down through here, that goes in the rear, and then it all ends up coming sort of down to where, where we're gonna end up draining, we're just bypassing all that and going that way.
So, as, as we go that way, and, and Michael, I don't know if you looked at it very closely, but how well have we addressed the drainage? What we don't wanna do, and what we cannot do, is make an existing problem worse.
Well, based on their design, I think they've well oversized that stormwater facility.
We, we basically designed that, we basically need the earth, so we dig that pond as much as we possibly could.
So that's where you're bringing out the earth from?
Yeah. And we're bringing, and we're bringing the drainage from across the street into it. So there won't be any drainage going to the east anymore. Everything, we're collecting all of it, bringing it into our pond and then piping it all the way over to the swale by the school.
So we've taken an uncomfortable situation and made it better.
Yeah, and then they're also sending everything to the town of Penfield, which
Oh, I'm all for that.
Yeah, you know it's about time.
But then it comes back around later as you go further east down State Road, so.
Yeah, yeah.
But they, based on their engineering report, they basically reduced the hundred-year storm event by almost fifty percent.
Okay.
Yeah, cause I, I've watched that land. I've walked Pat's land several times because we have a, um, drain opening there, uh, outlet that comes into the property.
Yeah, right, right now the pipe that comes underneath State discharges in a culvert. There's a low area there where the water just sits and then it spills out. And heads to the east in a, in a little one-foot swale. And it heads east and then it heads south all the way down through and ends up basically where we're gonna end up. Now we're just, the, the water that goes through the field is just in like a one-foot by one-foot like channel, it looks like. We're, we're just bypassing that and taking the water.
We're taking that away.
What's the greatest influence on groundwater there, which way does it flow?
The groundwater?
Yeah. So in other words, if we're gonna create a pond there, it's gonna go into the ground or evaporate off, is that my simple?
It's gonna be into the rock.
Okay, so it's gonna go into the rock, which direction does it flow in earth? I would think though, it's the greatest influence
Everything's heading south, yeah.
Does it come back north at some point?
Over by, over by Arbor.
Four Mile Creek, I think it eventually hits.
Four Mile Creek eventually comes back by Arbor. So it heads, sort of heads south and, yeah, and then it
It works its way south and east and then eventually starts heading north again to the lake.
Yeah.
Okay.
So you could plant more corne pad.
And basically that pond, I believe, holds the four hundred year rate of that. Just, just enough, just based on the numbers.
If one hundred is good, four is better. Okay.
The areas behind your houses, how is that gonna be, is that gonna be lawn area?
Yes.
Everything is wild?
Yes.
Won't be forever wild or anything like that?
No, and everything that you see that's that light green color is lawn. There's some fire retention areas on the plan.
There's a couple areas that are highlighted that'll be stormwater areas, these darker green areas. But, but mainly they're all just gonna be walkouts with lawns in the back.
Basement?
Yes.
Oh, basement?
Yes.
Okay.
Link, I got two questions.
Sure.
One is, have we, have you, or I guess maybe can you provide a state, maybe you have entrance of, uh, on State Road? I'd like to see where the center line of that road comes out based on headlights coming into the houses across the street.
Yeah, I think
I think one side, on your west side is a garage, uh, but on, on the east side, I think it's probably in a living room or something. I, I just wanna know what the, what where it would be and then maybe, I don't know if the applicant would be willing to maybe provide some thought for landscaping, a plan for something to help mitigate that? Cause there's really no way to move that entrance.
If it's gonna be
Based on site distance.
If it's right in somebody's windows that it's gonna hit and if it's a matter of putting a few pine trees up that are strategic to help somebody out, sure.
Then, um, I forgot my second question.
As long as they want the trees.
Well, right, I mean, if they say no, then
I could say yes, but it's not my property.
Bringing gas to all the units too?
Yes.
Have you checked with R G N E as far as capacity for gas electric?
Yes.
We got hunters from R G N E.
Mm-hmm.
That they're willing, they have, uh, they can serve it.
Are they going in the bags?
Yeah. Do they be going behind the units?
Typically they do, I mean, we, that's where we see them all the time, but, um.
That's how we designed it, we kept, we kept them a twenty-foot flat area behind all the beds.
We assume that's where they're go, but they always have that liberty that they come in and do their own designs, so it's not up to us.
That's right, I love R G N E because they're like, oh yeah, we love the landscaping at R G N E, suppose, no, we, we're done with that, we'll come through and just tear all the
Yeah, we, we purposely graded a twenty-foot flat area behind each pan for R G N E.
And we like them in the back. Nicer.
Where do you traditionally put your A C condensers?
Uh, depends on the unit, um, and if it's a, a walkout, you know, because depending on the grade. Um, typically they're in the back. Um, sometimes they'll end up on, far down the side before the slope starts, but obviously towards the, you know, towards the rear or in the backs.
In no cases it would be in the front.
No, we don't put them in the front yard.
Thank you.
Good answer.
Do you, uh, in, in the back of the units, and maybe I'm going ahead of everybody here, but do you typically have, like, what I see in townhouses, the fencing between the units or a pad back there or a deck or...
Well, all of our plans have a covered deck integrated right into them.
Okay.
So that they already, some people will expand that deck. Um, but sometimes with somebody, you know, we take it on a case-by-case basis. If somebody expands a deck and when they expand it out, if they look to their side and it's into somebody's bedroom window, we require they put a privacy screen there just to be kind to the neighbor, um, but it's always on a case-by-case. But we do put privacy screens in when it's gonna negatively affect somebody else.
Hey, guys.
Um, trash management is all private? Per individual or is that done through H O A?
The H O A handles it.
I'm sorry?
The H O A does. Usually get a much better, it's one contractor, one day, and it's all done by one account. So it's managed much better and more affordable that way.
Is there any provision for on-site dumpsters, dumpster enclosures?
No.
So bulk disposal is...
They're just residents. I mean, there shouldn't be any different bulk disposal than you have at your typical house.
So it's all residential pickup, you're not gonna have dumpsters?
They're all toters. Recycle bins and toters like everybody else has. And the community center will have its own toter.
Is there any lighting proposed for the road?
Yes.
Yeah, there's, uh, landscaping lighting plans as part of the side. So there's a...
I couldn't hear you.
The answer was yes, there is landscaping and lighting proposed for the plan. Michael recognized that.
They, they show in the plan, uh, our typical spec for what we have in the village, the lighting.
Yeah, we...
Will that too is dedicated after...
Uh, no, it's not in the right of way.
The lighting?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I don't know if the H O A is typically taking them. I mean, do you guys do lighting districts? Do you do?
No, if, if it's in the right of way, we typically take them, but, uh...
The village, the village is just one big district.
Yeah, so you don't have districts, yeah.
No, no.
So I would, you just, uh, so I would say we'd wanna dedicate it as part of the road and the sidewalk cuz, um, we're doing the village lighting fixture on the, for street lighting and trying to light the sidewalk and...
And speaking of dedication, uh, we noticed some of the infrastructure is outside of the right of way. So either you change the right of way or we need an easement for everything that's outside of the right of way.
We'll be, uh, the plan is, is to do, we'll do easements for utilities outside the right of way. We just put a note on the utility plan.
Okay.
Cuz it's hard to show all these easements at a underscale.
Oh, yeah.
It's really muddied up on the plan. So once we get into the final section plans, we'll show the easements.
Okay.
On each, around the utilities that are not in the right of way.
Okay. And Jake was looking for L E Ds, but not the like ones that you can...
Not the real cool ones with the nicer L E Ds, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think we just, whatever the village standard light fixture is what we, what we propose.
And if it needs an update with L E D, that's what we assume we would do with L E D.
Our, our plans are kinda outdated.
Sure.
I haven't been through Arbor Creek, but only at night, so I can't really tell. Is there color diversity for the, for unit, three unit, or is it all just one?
It's currently the same color.
Okay.
It's the same color. There's not diversity. The same color.
So every single unit is the same?
That's the way we have it in Arbor Creek currently, yes. And should drive through, it looks very nice. Another day.
My, my brother and sister-in-law own a townhouse in Arbor Creek and to me it looks fantastic, it looks great during the day.
Thank you.
You gotta go through it.
Who's your brother and sister-in-law?
David Maureen White.
Okay.
I forgot their address.
Yeah.
They're like four digits or something.
I would know a lot of numbers.
Yeah.
I don't know any addresses.
Yeah, the lot numbers are different than... They've been in there about a year. They closed later on last Thanksgiving.
Okay.
Do you have anything else?
No, I think, uh...
Bill? Michael, is there something else?
And obviously I'd welcome anybody that, I mean, I, if it wasn't COVID, I'd say we'd do a tour of Arbor Creek, but, uh, I don't know how much we tour these days, but anybody's welcome to drive through and come and see what it looks like. I mean, we, we're proud of the community that we built and we're proud of all of our communities and we wanna do another community here that the village will be proud of and it'll be an asset to the, to the area.
Perfect. All right, we may call you guys back up.
Sure.
But what I wanna do right now is I wanna, I'm not officially closing you guys out, but I wanna listen to what the folks and the general public who have showed up here, I wanna hear what they've got to say. And just in general, um, we received six different notes from citizens. And one was from a Cindy Van Pach, she's concerned about water and drainage. One was from Patricia Evans, she is also concerned about water and runoff. We have a Mr. John Brophy on, uh, 250 and he's concerned about traffic and the placement of the exit on State Road. Guess what? He's right across the street from him. Rue Van Castor, uh, let's see.
Oh, I'm there.
There you go. Well, I'll let you talk, but hold on a second.
Okay.
Um, yes, she was concerned that we were having this meeting in December. Probably valid in the middle of a pandemic and should we have put off the airing a little bit later to generate more folks? So that's valid, but thank you for coming. Uh, we got a Donald Schneider who lives on State Road, he's concerned about traffic. The exits are almost directly across. We got a Kathy Pel, or excuse me, Patty Pellegrino. And, uh, she's concerned with some of the traffic that goes out on the State Road. So what I'm gonna do is I'll make sure that these are entered as written by the folks into the record and then, one at a time, anybody come on up and tell us what your concerns are. You can speak for or against it, or you can actually even ask questions.
No, can I just say something real quick?
Can I stop you?
Yeah.
Oh, hell. I just wanna say this, because of the situation we're in, if you don't feel comfortable going up to the podium, if we can hear you standing where you are...
Fair enough. That's a, that's a valid, valid topic. Thank you. So either stand up where you are, just tell us who you are, what your address says and what your concerns are. Do you think it's a good idea, a bad idea? Yes, ma'am?
I have a lot of questions. First of all, I would like to be noted for the record that, um, several of my neighbors, my husband and I, expressed our...
Get it, put your name and address.
I'm sorry, Rue Van Castor on State Road.
What's your address?
1308. And I'll start over. I would like it to be noted that my, several of my neighbors, my husband and I, have expressed our objection to this in-person only meeting that was scheduled during the pandemic. We felt it might have been done to discourage people from attending, which it did. Several people did not feel it was safe to attend any sort of gathering and the COVID rates are growing now, it's kind of being a... I emailed the planning board chairman suggesting that the meeting be postponed until COVID is creased and I didn't succeed with mine until that, that is on, that is in the laws that it has to be an in-person meeting. I'm sure those laws were before the pandemic. So I just wanted to express my concern. I'd also like to know if there's anybody else here from State Road? I have some questions. I'd love it if you could write some answers down for me if I ask the questions or not, though, who would give them a try? So is there anyone here from State or around the area that will need a try? Unshamed.
Okay, you could write this?
And everybody here, at least here, not too well.
No.
We're struggling.
Oh, no, it might get some plugged in.
Yeah.
We're not on T V, isn't it?
Speak loud.
Okay, I'll speak loud. I may have, I may repeat some of the questions that were already asked, um, but these were questions taken from my neighbors that had emailed. How long do you expect the whole construction to take? It's four phases. Do you have any ideas for years?
What?
Um, so, like I said, we typically, as we get going, we do on average about 25 homes per year. In that, there's typically a bit of a startup period, that the first year is not 25 and there's typically a little of a tail off at the end. So it's in that six to seven year range.
Um, when will it, this is for the town, the village, when will a decision be made on this proposal?
I don't know. It could happen as early as tonight or we can ask for more information.
It could happen tonight, just to correct the chairman.
Thank you.
They are seeking, they are seeking preliminary subdivision and site plan approval. They have to have final approval, which they haven't, they haven't asked for that yet, but there's, they have to submit the plans for that. And that, there, there will be a, a public hearing associated with, with that application. Technically speaking, this public hearing is in conjunction with the variance, not with the preliminary approval that they seek because the village code doesn't require a public hearing for preliminary subdivision approval. But, so there will be another public hearing, but we couldn't give you a date as to when it's gonna be approved because the law requires that when they submit their final subdivision plan within 62 days, this board has to conduct the public hearing and then, uh, within 62 days after that, they have to make a decision. So it's dependent upon when they submit their application for final subdivision approval and they've gotta take into account the comments that you've heard before and there may be some modifications, you know, done to the plan and so we can't really give you a...
Okay.
...a, a date.
Could you be notified?
Oh, it, there will be, since there's a public hearing, there will be a, a notice given, you know, and published in the Webster Herald and on the village website as to when the public hearing is going to occur. The village also has a courtesy, even though it's not required by New York State law, they send out notices. I don't, they, do they do the mailing thing that the neighbors? They still mail to the neighbors and that, again, that's not required by New York State law. It's something extra that the village does.
Okay, um, we, our husband and I are very familiar with Arbor Creek. We have looked at your townhouse. You're very nice.
Thank you.
Um, we noticed Arbor Creek has 116 ranch houses and you donated 84 acres of open space. How many, how many acres were the buildings actually built on?
Uh, well, the overall project was 118, um, so 16 and 18, so we have 34.
Okay, um, it just seems to me that this development across State Road, over 44 acres, is definitely more densely populated.
It's actually less dense by the number of units per the land that was developed. Arbor Creek, part of that land donation was it's a lot of wetland, as the creek, as Four Mile Creek weaves through it and there's a lot of wetland areas. That's why we dedicated all that open space and really clustered all of the, um, townhouses on the land that we developed.
Okay. And I think you talked about the price of the unit. How would the price of the unit affect property values on the houses that now exist on State Road? Any ideas from the village or...
I don't...
That's a question. Yeah, who, who knows?
Right.
You would, you would think, again, and I'm no, I'm not an appraiser of real estate, but if they're building on average $350,000 townhouses across the street from you, it's not gonna detrimentally affect your property value.
It can help the tax base because now you're taking that much tax revenue and putting it into the village and the town and the area with a very low impact on the schools.
So our tax rate would not necessarily be going up because of this? Um, is it zoned properly? And years ago, '35, I think, when the village invited Shands to build there, we were told that if no buildings were put up within three years, zoning would revert to single-family dwellings. And, um, I was curious when it got to R2 because we were, we never were aware of that. I think it was R, Shands had requested R3. And then at that time, instead of, they did not know whether it was revert to single, which... Who would have access to those records?
I've been here for 20 years with R2, um, I don't know.
Well, would the, would the records exist of the, the meetings that had occurred?
Yep.
Why don't, why don't you and I try and take that back and see what we can find in the... Do you know, ma'am, approximately when that was? I mean, a timeframe, a...
Late, late seconds.
Late seconds, yeah.
I can tell you just by looking at the zoning code, it was amended June 9th, 1994 to allow single-family dwellings and townhouses. So since at least 1994, it's zoned properly for either single-family homes or townhomes.
And that's R2, though?
That's the R2-9.6.
We'll still look at it, see if we can find a sequence of events.
Do you expect people to be coming and going during rush hours since they're mostly seniors? How is it at Arbor Creek?
Um, it's, it's, mostly seniors are really off-peak drivers and we did submit that traffic study. I don't know the exact numbers, but I think that it shows, um, somewhere plus or minus in the 40 to 45 cars during the A M. and P M. peak times. It's all in the traffic study we submitted, but oftentimes people have the assumption they see 124 units and they assume there's two cars per unit and everybody's gonna come and go every day at the same time and it really doesn't happen and the traffic studies show that.
Where can we see this traffic study? Is there some place that we can...
We've submitted it to the village.
Yeah, we've got an email.
So, we've shared it. We're happy to share it again, obviously.
Um, we've been told that there's bedrock in that area and the blasting would be necessary if there were basements. Is there bedrock?
Uh, there is some bedrock, but we don't have any significant blasting required, especially for the basements. There may be a couple spots where there's a deep hole in the pond or something that we need to do. A couple of deep spots on the site, infrastructure, but there's no, uh, significant blasting required.
Um, and this is, as I said, these are questions I have from my neighbors. Can we assume that current village noise restrictions will be followed? For example, no building noise before 8 A M. or after supper time?
We follow the village restrictions, whatever the guidelines are.
I know the building effect would be pretty hard on these people.
You won't be around for the building.
January 29th. Yeah, that's right.
Next time, I know.
Okay, from the plans that we looked at the other day, my husband and I came down, it looks like there was a depression, not a berm, against across State Road. Can you explain a little bit better what the barriers right on State would be? And I had trouble hearing you before, so can you speak up?
Yeah, along State Road right now, we have, we actually have some bio-retention areas. I mean, there's some, there's trees along, along the right of way and then the bio-retention areas, which will be, they will be depression areas. They're meant to just treat runoff. They fill up with six inches of water and then it's meant to infiltrate and drain out. So there's sort of, uh, there'll be like a landscaped area.
Not the road salt, probably. Was that not just the road salt?
Well, it treats the pavement, basically. It's meant to treat the water quality for the runoff. For both, you know, it'll collect the runoff from the, the pavement area and some of the roots and it's, basically it's a required water quality facility that we need to do to meet D E C. requirements.
Okay, so there's no real berm? There's no pressure from State?
Um, no.
No, not real. What, what our goal is, as you can see, we just put a few trees on here and we would add some more landscaping as we get deeper into it. But the goal is to have a flat area that's along State where we can put some landscaping and then that bio-retention area would be behind that.
And, and basically we, you know, we tried to push the units back off of State and do, you know, so that they're, that you're providing some buffer before the first units, yeah.
And we, one, one of the things that we liked about the plan was we did provide a nice big green area along State Road versus having just the backs of townhomes looking at State Road, so...
We would be facing the front of them.
What's that?
We would be facing the front of them.
You'd see the fronts of the homes versus just seeing the backs of houses.
Okay, approximately how many feet from the State Road to the driveways are what we would see?
To the first road there?
To State Road or to the first road inside the track?
First road in the development, from the edge of State, from the, not that of State.
So, it's about a hundred and ten feet from State Road to the edge of the first road.
Thank you.
Could you explain that? I don't understand what that means.
See, the question that she had asked was just.
No, I know what the question was. I don't, I didn't understand the answer.
So, it's about from State Road to this first road we have here, it's about a hundred feet, a hundred and ten.
Are there townhouses there?
This is just green. This is.
It's green, and then there's a road.
Yep.
And then there's townhouse.
Yes.
And we're looking at, I live on State Road, thirteen oh six.
You're looking at the fronts of the townhouses.
About three here, and the townhouses are even further, right? So, basically, the most.
Yeah.
Ma'am, just, just so our secretary can keep track, only one person at a time to be addressing the board, because we need your name and address. If you want to wait for your neighbor to finish, then you can get up there.
I'm sorry, but I was.
Do whatever you want.
She may want to come up and work in that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't want to come out of the pandemic, I get the first class.
So, the, the front of those townhouses are about a hundred and seventy foot from the road.
From the road, and there's a road in between?
Right. There's a, there's a green area, then a road, then the driveway, then the townhouse.
And you said there would be walk, sidewalks, but no walking trails, like you have at Arbor Creek, right?
Right.
What about sidewalks on State Road? Right now, it's not particularly a safe road to walk on, and if there's additional traffic, it's going to be even less safe to walk on. And my husband and I are walkers, before you speak before my new girlfriend. But, and we would frequently walk down from our house to Lincolnshire. And it is not a pleasant place to walk, the danger of walk. Are there any plans for sidewalks there? And I don't know if that's village, town.
It's a state, State Road's a county road.
Which side are you talking about, on the north side of State Road?
We live on the north side, right? But there's no sidewalks on the south side either.
I can't promise you anything other than that I will make our village trustees aware of the fact that, and I'm a big fan of sidewalks in neighborhoods, a lot of have them. I can't promise you anything other than that I will tell them. That sounded like a pretty good comment to me.
Okay, because truly, I know the neighbors on either side of me, and the new ones that have moved on, moved in since, or old neighbors moved out, I am not even that, because it's not conducive for walking on that street. Um, we had a question, could the access road off State Road be moved? Um, one person suggested across from Lincolnshire, one person suggested that's not good. And we wondered whether it could be moved toward, across from the tennis courts, which would be not shining in anybody's light, and it would not cause additional traffic.
Upper right corner.
Upper right corner there, the tennis court across from the.
There's a playground, yeah.
That's where the drainage comes across the street. There's a drainage pipe that comes in from the north.
Drainage pipe comes in here.
Right at those tennis courts.
Okay, have you considered it going across from Lincolnshire, or why didn't you consider it?
They don't own enough land directly across.
It's off the property a little bit. You know, we, we, we basically, um, we basically reviewed the site distance and, um, and sort of centered it in the, the open area, um, here. And then we just, I mean, we tried to move the units off the road there, just to try to keep them, keep a buffer there off of State Road. It was the intent. And, um, in order to do that, it was just sort of to try to center it so that you could feed, um, both sides of the development for people can get in and get to their units.
Most likely, the county DOT will not want an access drive across the street, because it creates more conflicts. They'll want to offset it at least two-hundred, three-hundred feet anyways to avoid the conflict.
Yes, because there's been a lot of accidents on, uh, two fifty and State, so they prefer no more. Yeah, why, why can't it be put across from the drainage? Why does the drainage prevent it from being put there, the road?
Well, we're trying to take care of, we're trying to fix some drainage problems there. So, because this, right now, this drainage comes here and then goes east. So, we're picking it up and collecting it all and then bringing it south.
The water's going to be above ground, couldn't it be under a road?
Well, then we have to pipe it all the way.
Yeah, that, yeah, exactly. Um, think about it. I'm not sure I understood that one completely. What were we asking?
We were wondering why the road couldn't go across from the tennis courts, where it wouldn't be shining, no traffic would be shining in anybody's light through the traffic, through the tennis court.
So, the entrance and exit?
Right.
Go down to State Road.
Right.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
He said there's water problems there, down there, which is, that's where they have the drainage pond. But the water wouldn't be on top of the road anyway. Why couldn't it be covered under the road and have the road there?
Where would the drainage pond go?
Oh, you can leave the drainage.
That's a problem. I mean, this is, this is just the natural low side of the site, and it's.
It's the really wet area of the site where it's mainly wet there, yeah.
May I come up and ask a question pointing to the road?
Sure.
We were looking at it and wondering, okay, could this road be extended over in front of the drainage and the tennis courts from there? Or this one be extended somewhere there and run down the right-hand side of it? That's what we had thought, is it?
That's, I mean, that's, yeah, so that's a lot of road with nothing on it. It's that the villagers have to maintain that you don't have any units on it.
So, there's something we wanted you to think about. Um, you said there've been water studies done. What size mains are used in the development or around the development?
Water, the water supply or the drainage?
Supply. Supply.
Sorry. What's that? Drainage? Uh, drainage pipes?
She, she was asking the, well, the, the water, what, what size pipes are the water? The?
The, the wa, the pipe coming out of that pond is a twenty-four.
No, the water.
Oh, the water.
Not storm.
Okay, water service, then eight-inch, eight-inch DIP.
I'm sorry, what did they want?
So, it's an eight-inch water main, is that what you're asking, the water main or the drainage?
The water.
It's an eight-inch water.
Eight-inch ductile iron pipe that, that's dangerous. And it's watering, we don't ruin it, we don't ruin it.
Okay, well, we were wondering, uh, one water tower is already been moved, removed from two fifty. Does that affect the water flow?
Not at all.
Okay. We've noticed that it's noticeably slower in the morning, the water supply to our area. I mean, when everybody's up and showering at the same time, it's definitely lower. And we wondered when's the last time the water mains on our side of the road were updated?
Unfortunately, you're going to have to talk to the real pound of water, the owner.
Okay. Because to our knowledge, the developments of Arbor Creek, Candlewood, Fawnwood, Phillips Road, uh, the development east of State Road School, and one or two other developments on the southeast corner, I'm not sure if there's one or two there, um, have all been dealt with no change in the water mains to our road. We think they're still six-inch mains, but we will call the water mains that, the water.
What depends, because what you have is usually within a development, the mains are six-inch. But once you get out the development, you have what's called a transition main, which could be twelve, sixteen, eighteen inches. So, if you look in your house, typically, you've got a three-quarter inch pipe that beats everything, and then after that, you've got a half-inch pipe. That's what you can draw the block.
And we wondered how dark, how bright is dark-skies compliant lighting?
We would use the village spec as far as the fixture.
Okay.
It's a village, village standard wattage, and they have cutoffs, so it doesn't shine into that.
A little biller and, yep, I mean, where the new, the black fixtures, it's going to be just like a.
Okay.
When you go down there at night, you'll see how bright it's going to be.
Okay. Well, we drove by up through Arbor Creek the other night, and we noticed around four streetlights.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't do a streetlight, it's not part of the village. We didn't do streetlights everywhere. We did them where, where there's some stretches where there's no homes. So, we added streetlights where there's no homes, and then where you have the townhouses, you have all the lighting on the buildings.
Okay, we noticed that too. And we just wondered if the village code is different than the town code for streetlights?
It is.
We will have to check out those. We wondered whether the lights would be shining in our windows at night, but we will drive down, fill the runway home. You said we were going to read Don Schneider's, put Don Schneider's email in the minutes?
That is correct.
Yeah. He asked that it would be read aloud, I think, if you need.
Okay, I can do that. I'm, I'm flexible. Let's do that. There you go. Mr. Burnham, I apologize for forwarding this to you when I misspelled, God, never mind that part, all right. Uh, my name is Donald Snyder. I live at thirteen hundred State Road. I just saw proposed plan for new development, and right off the bat, the first thing that comes to mind is why is the entrance and exit almost directly crossed from existing homes? Why not align it with Lincolnshire so homeowners don't have to deal with traffic problems, potential accidents directly in front of their homes? Currently, there is no safety, there are no safety features along State Road, and it appears they have no intention of including any either. If they incorporate walking trails, then they are encouraging walking through the areas. Again, no safety features, not to mention headlights shining into their homes at night constantly. We are accustomed to looking at nature across the street. What amenities are they going to put in place so we can at least get some appearance of nature when we look in that direction instead of townhomes? Nighttime proximity lighting is another issue. Fairly dark skies is the existing situation. What will they be putting in place to keep that environment, environment continuity? I think it means environmental continuity. It seems to me that the proposal might look aesthetically pleasing on paper, but in practicality, it is quite the opposite. Donald P. Snyder, thank you very much. And I will also give this to Joe, and she will make it part of the meeting minutes.
And the last thing I had was a note from my six-year-old granddaughter. She wrote this this morning. She asked me why I couldn't pay attention to her, and I said, well, they were putting townhouses across the street. And she said, what? They're going to cut down those trees? So, she said, I'm going to write them a letter. Will you tell them? So, I told her I would. This is why you should not build houses on State Road. The woods are homes for deer, foxes, spelled F-O-X-I-S, and bears, and bats, and squirrels. Where are people going to hike in the summer? Where are people going to explore nature? Love, Margaret.
Very nice, very nice.
Thank you very much for that. I appreciate you taking the time to, to share everything with us. We have a fair number of other folks. If anyone want to offer an opinion one way or another, yes, ma'am?
My name is Pat Feinheimer. I live at thirteen oh six State Road. And this meeting is about the variance, and I believe that the builders are asking for a variance.
That is correct.
To move closer to a very busy State Road. Um, I don't, I don't.
Hold on, let's, hold on a second. Let's, let's, let's hear what she's got to say first.
I'm, I'm concerned, I've lived on State Road for thirty-five years. I know what the traffic looks like. Um, and I believe the variance is, is on State Road itself. They, they want to build closer to the road than is allowed by, no, I'm, I'm asking for clarification.
Yeah, okay, let me, let me give it to you.
Okay.
Under normal circumstances, you would have been right, because this project is on State Road, and it's on the corner of State and two fifty.
Right.
The variance they're asking for is they are going to build, manufacture, or whatever you want to call it, roads inside the development.
Okay.
Then they will take those roads and they're going to do what they call this, dedication. They're going to give them to the village, village now has to take care of them, plow them and otherwise.
Okay.
So, that's now a village road inside the development. So, the variance will have to be, then they are subject to all the codes that exist within the village for distance from the setback. Now, if we drive down any of the streets in the Shants Track, you can almost stand up at one end of the street and look down, and you can see almost every single one of them, except for that weird porch that hangs out there in the front. But you can look down the street, and every single house is, is, the front of it touches the same line. They're all forty feet back from the road.
Okay.
All right. So, when we build these new roads in the track, it will have to be forty feet back from that. What they're asking for is can they build that twenty-five feet back from that? And so, they want a fifteen-foot variance, but it's not from State Road. It will be from the road within the track itself or within the development. Did that make sense to you?
Uh, I might say yes, but.
Well, it's from the other.
Nothing to do with State Road. It's these internal roads is what they want to build closer to. This is State Road.
Okay, so the variance is now for this space here?
No.
That is for that space.
Nothing to do with State Road.
That space between State Road and the interior road itself, I think I heard earlier, is something like a hundred feet.
They basically want to have shorter driveways than they otherwise would be required to, to each town.
So, when I, when I.
And there's not a single driveway to go out on the State Road.
No, I understood that. I, I was trying to figure out what the variance was. And the variance is.
Fifteen foot. Normally, this would have to be back there at forty feet. They want to move it up fifteen feet, so it's only twenty-five feet from the.
From the road.
Well, right, he said, and then he said thirty-five feet on the other side. So, he's only asking for the sidewalk side to be twenty-five feet, or, so you need that fifteen to go there.
Okay, and, and so, this right here, when I, when I look out my front, my front lawn, I'm going to see, first, I'm going to see a road.
And here's State Road.
I'm going to see grass, maybe a tree or something.
Maybe, correct.
I mean, it'd be nice if you told us there were good trees.
Well, they, they have it on the plan. They have it here for landscaping. So, all these little things are trees.
Okay.
This is the bio-retention. This is the lawn area. They're basically, I've said, and correct me if I'm wrongly, these buildings right here are a hundred and seventy feet from State Road.
Yes. Mm-hmm.
So, from the State Road, you're going to go a hundred and seventy feet before you get to the front of these townhouses.
Okay. Well, it's not okay, but I understand.
I want to say one thing, though, and this is, this is what's happened in the past. When you look at a set of plans.
Yes.
And you see the landscaping, what you're seeing is a, um, a picture of mature trees.
Yes.
The reason I say that is because I've had people say, well, wait a minute. On the plans, it showed this tree that was like, you know, eight inches around and then twenty feet high. Well, they don't normally plant trees that big. It'll grow that big, but what you'll see is this is what the mature landscaping will look like once it's a tree. So, just to give you an idea.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir, please.
Yes, my name's Bill Jones. I live at forty Dunning Avenue. But I'm here, um, in, for my mother-in-law lives at thirteen forty-one State Road. I'm concerned about the water issue. Can I go over the map?
Sure. Tonight, while you're walking over there, that is on the, the south side of State Road, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Right next door to the property. Six thirty-eight.
I know the house.
See that pond?
Yes.
That's the house.
She's right here.
Their house, the one and only house is right next to it.
Right here, okay.
This pond was extremely enlarged by your five-hundred flood, a five-hundred-year flood thing from the first original one. It never looked this large. This is fairly large.
It was all green space on the first sketch they showed us.
Right now, from this point here, your twenty-four-inch pipe, is that exiting here and going all the way back to the back south? Okay, is that underground? Everything is buried. Okay, perfect. Across the lot, it'll dump into that six-by-eight ditch. Across the lot, it'll dump into that six by eight ditch.
Or it goes to the big, the big, um, swell that's by the school.
Yes.
So you're piping.
So I'm piping all the way to that.
All the way to that connection. Okay, you, you realize right now that there's a beaver dam that's, um, backing that up. Right now, that, that flow is restricted extremely, a lot. Are you going to address that situation downstream? Because if this has to go to where you say it's going to go, somebody's going to have to do something, I'm just letting you know now. Because right now, there's four feet of water in that ditch. So, okay, alright, so this got enlarged quite a bit. This water from all this development, three-quarters of it is going to end up here?
Almost all of it.
Almost all.
The only thing that's not is the rear of these.
Okay, okay, any other overflow exits anywhere on this pond? Is there any way there, any water going to flow back onto my mother-in-law's property?
There's a spillway.
Okay.
That, uh, that if it ever overflows, the spillway is centralized in here.
So we have potential for water?
And it can cause traffic events.
What, what's that, what year storm is that?
Like I said, it's right now, that pond is sized for a four-hundred-year rate event, so.
Okay, what did you figure from the existing Shance water that comes in right now? There's an existing eighteen to twenty-four inch.
We, we, we sized it for all of that, we sized everything that's coming to it, we took the drainage area.
So not only a five hundred year for here, a five hundred year for over here? Okay.
Yeah, right now, the hundred-year ponds, um, a foot underneath the, uh, the spillway.
Okay, this pond, what's your, what's your expected depth for that pond?
It varies.
Um, well, I mean, the, um, permanent pool is at, um.
Mike, what, okay, while I'm leading up to that, if you can't make that depth, what's going to happen?
We've done test pits already through that pond area.
The, the depth, the, anything that's into the rock is strictly water quality and not in the quantity calculations.
Okay, because the amount of surface area from roofing, macadam and everything else, it's, I, I know this area, there's an existing pond out there now. This, this land does not per. When this, when you guys dug, dug test pits in August, we've had, we were three inches below water, we were in a drought situation. I'm just letting you know, that, that, that was a huge factor in digging test pits when, if you thought it per.
We, we're not accounting for per, infiltration on the emergency.
Okay, 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 but as long as this twenty-four inch pipe and everything over here is, 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 now, oh, that's the next question. When is this infrastructure going to be put in with this pipe to take that water?
So the plan is just so, I mean, the pond's got to get built with section one and then this discharge has to be put in with section one. We are going to put in the pipe here that's going to serve section one, we're also putting the pipe in here.
To do here.
During the lower, in section four, um, so that this dries out before we.
Is there any way that something can be, in case this, what's this exit again, twelve-inch exit, the overflow?
No, it's just a emergency spillway, stone spillway.
So rip raft or something like that, yep, okay. I think that ends, Mike, Mike, um, my questions, because my big concern is, is water, you got it now? We've already had it for thirty-five years and this is, this is gonna.
There's significant improvement.
Yep, and then around the pond, what's going to be, is this going to be wide open and just tapers right in? So just, you know, natural grasses around here or any other, and, and, you know, this is some mature trees you're leaving?
Well, we're sort of a property, it's going to turn out much better than it's long there.
Okay, okay, alright, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, next, yes ma'am?
Okay, Cindy Vanderpim, thirteen ninety-five State Road, that's my mom, that's my brother-in-law. Okay, when this first started, the picture up here, there was like a hundred foot of trees left there and the pond was really slum. What happened to all the trees, I know you have to get the pond, but that's ridiculous, you're coming right over, how much trees are going to be between her house and your green space?
What we, what we did originally was, the original design was, we felt we were going to continue with the water going in that direction that we currently flow and just not increase the amount of water. But when we realized how much water went that way, we changed the design and decided to capture all of that water and keep any of it from going to the east and pull it all through our pond.
Okay, so now.
So when we did that, we had to expand the pond size out.
But we went from having a woods there to now basically kind of a swamp that's going to be, you know, mosquitoes and.
Well, it's, it's, it's a swamp there now.
Well, it's not as bad as.
It stops sending water that way is what our goal is.
I don't know, because my husband, I live right next to the school and we've gotten a lot of field dirt and my husband's taken over a hundred tractor, tractor loads of dirt over because of all the water that keeps coming, so it doesn't, you know.
Our plan is to stop that water.
I hope your promises are going to work because we are so wet over there, it's ridiculous.
We, we know, we, we looked at sending water that way, it didn't work, so we went the other way.
But it just seems ridiculous to, like, I don't know, all these cute little, like we said, Will said, the trees you see in the pictures are twenty foot high and eight foot wide and we're going from a woods and everything to like a few little trees that may be in thirty, forty years or, you know, it's just kind of ridiculous.
I understand.
You should leave some trees.
It's hard to make the drainage improvements that we're going to make and leave trees at the same time.
Well, how much room, how many trees are you actually going to leave between the edge of your property?
I don't know.
And, well, how many foot, how much, how much space? I mean, we don't want to be sitting there looking over at this.
There's a bit of trees.
Yeah, how many trees are there? So, like I said, the original plan is set, I think sixty feet or more.
There's about sixty feet left. There and there's about sixty.
The picture looks a lot different.
The sound here is, you know, looks like there's about fifty feet of trees that are supposed to be there.
Now, see, before it came all the way past the park. You know, and now it's, it's like cut with that.
I understand, we're, we're trying to balance a lot of things, we're also bringing all of the subdivision and all the drainage through this area.
So is there going to be, how much trees are going to be between here and here?
Looks like about seventy feet.
Okay, because when they were surveying and everything, they actually came over on my mom's property, they cut down some, you know, stuff to go through it and she called to find out why they were going through her property. Um, also, um, I lost my train for a second. Oh, the easement, I just have a question about that because the easement was signed, uh, for the water in, with Shance in nineteen seventy-two. So almost fifty years ago, there's no, no end on easement or, I mean, and it was signed with another company. So it just.
Is it an easement for what?
For the water that they're talking about because.
Drainage?
They're, yeah, the drainage, because they're bringing the water, you know.
Across our land.
Yeah, across our land, which is quite wet anyhow.
Goes across their property, but it was, it runs, you know, easement runs with the land.
So a fifty-year-old easement signed with another company is still, okay, and it's going to, but it's going to be piped back there, it's not going to be.
We're going to pipe that, it's going to be restored back to.
Okay, so my husband can still take the tractor out there because it also says in the original easement that there'd be a, a bridge in case we needed it to get the tractor across.
Yeah, the original easement, I think they were trying to build a channel or something.
Just a ditch.
And we're piping that.
So the land will look just like it does now? So, is it going behind the existing woods, are we going to take down part of the woods to get it over to the swell as you call it, high school?
There's some woods that all, will need to take down, but there's a trail back there that we're trying to follow.
But it doesn't go all the way over?
But it doesn't go all the way.
And if you stop partway, then you're like right behind my house, which is very wet, because the school dumps on us from that side too.
It's going all the way across and following easement all the way to where, where we're discharged to that swell.
Can you mark where that easement is so we, you know?
It's on the, it's on the.
It's on the back tractor path, all the way to the back, that's where that pipe goes. The furthest back point that you could, you're, you're like twenty feet before the property line, before.
So the back part of the wood is going to be gone?
No, there's, there's only certain section in, like the gentleman said, it's marked, state.
Alright, I just wish you could save some more trees because like her granddaughter said, it's a shame. I mean, cut everything down and then you're going to plant trees, it just doesn't make sense. Just leave the big ones that you can and it'll be better for the people across the street, it'll be better for us, it'll just, you know, why mow it down and put it back? And put it back smaller that's going to take forever to grow.
Thank you. Other comments or questions?
My name is John Carrick, I live at eleven fifty-five Brooks Road, right at the southwest corner of the project there. And I've got a few concerns, uh, first of all, the, so many of your variants went from, uh, what, single family? Whatever you call it there, what, what was the difference in the density?
Well, the density is, and I, and I know that there was some question earlier on about when it got changed from an R one to an R two. But to my knowledge, it's an R two and single-family homes or townhomes are an appropriate structure for that zone. So, the variance that's being requested then is, as we explained earlier, to build the houses.
I understand it, so in other words, the density is not going to be increased with this, uh, new change?
No, it's going to be the existing code that the village has for an R two nine.
It just sounds like it's quite densely populated, you know, a hundred, a hundred and twenty-four homes in a forty-acre site there, it's kind of. I'm sorry?
It's allowed for the building.
Okay, so that hasn't changed, uh, the, the entrance to, to Route two fifty is going to be tough because that, that traffic at morning and night is, uh, it's just hard to get out of the driveway. So that, uh, I would have thought maybe a couple entrances on State Road would have made some more sense because it's slightly less traffic on State Road than two fifty. I'm sure your studies will probably prove that.
Fair enough, the traffic has been brought up.
It's really a tough thing.
As a potential issue, we here have a lot of clarity.
And of course, you're, you're, I understand that moving a lot of dirt there is going to ruin a lot of the trees there, but there is no green area here that's going to be untouched, right? There's no area that's going to be untouched with the, the natural habitat of trees and shrubs?
Just, just a little bit around, along the south property line.
Where's that?
Just along the property lines on the south and the east, there'll be some vegetation.
Yeah, so basically, uh, the site will be annihilated with, uh, with, with trees and brush and, I understand you got to raise the highs and lowers to get the things working, but, uh, how deep do you plan on making that pond, that big pond, into bedrock probably, right?
It's in the bedrock by about six to eight feet.
Yeah, okay. That brushy area there, south of the church, they own that land, they own all that area, right, so, kind of surprised there.
If they have a revival, they can increase the parking lot, so.
Make a cemetery, right?
Oh, oh, that'd be good.
Well, that's, uh, that's all I have, I think it's, uh, it's a little heavy with, with units there, but by the way, you say you're going to have basements, but your sanitary sewer is pumped up to the.
It's not pumped, it's gravity.
Into the sandstrat?
The gravity is all, uh, all the basements are, there's all basements and there's all gravity sewer, I mean, we'll have hung plumbing, they won't, the sewer won't be serving the basements by gravity, but.
So it doesn't work, gravity doesn't work in the Shance track then?
Yep.
I think that's all I got.
So generally, if I got your comments correctly, in, in general terms, a little bit denser for your taste, uh, and you'd like a little bit more tree space or, or a little bit less clear cutting?
You know, there's, the area in between those loopy roads there, it shows green and a few trees there, you're going to undercut that to get extra dirt you need, so it's going to ruin all the trees there, so who's going to mow that lawn, by the way?
Uh, the HOA higher level contract.
So the entire light green area is going to be all mowed, so to speak?
Yes.
If, if your density question, that the code allows that townhouses should not exceed eight units per acre, they got forty-four acres, they could have three hundred and fifty-two units.
Yeah, we're less than three units per acre when the code allows eight.
They're proposing a hundred and forty-four, so it's way less dense than it could be.
Okay, looks like there's a lot more, a lot more units there than the Shance track, for example, per acre.
I'm not familiar with the Shance track, we're just going.
Well, that area to the north.
Yep.
Well, you can't compare single-family houses to townhouses.
Yeah, I understand.
And I'm sure the total acreage of the Shance track, as you say, is much more than forty-four acres.
Oh, well, yeah, several, nine sections or something like that. Okay, the environmental, the environmental we changed, apparently, that's all I got.
John, thank you very much, we appreciate it. Anyone else?
Yeah, Jim Ladani, eleven sixty-one Webster Road, prefer four-nine mile point or whatever you'd call it. Been there almost forty years, a couple of things that came up, uh, one was a sidewalk and I think that should be required before anything else gets approved here, okay, because we only have one chance to shake these guys down and that's what it is, to get what we want, okay? And, you know, and we need a, you know, we need a sidewalk along State Road, it doesn't affect me, okay? But I bike it, run it, whatever, it, it would, it wouldn't hurt and this is our one chance, one chance, to get somebody else to build it for us.
I don't know, I don't know what the outcome of that is or if that's even possible, but what I can commit to is exactly what I said earlier, was that I would make sure that the trustees were aware of it and it would have my support, by the way, not just aware, I'm a big fan of sidewalks, I think they belong in our neighborhood, I'd like to make them aware.
So does that mean the trustees would then appropriate village money for it, or would we take this opportunity to let someone else install it?
Well, I, I think that would be up to them, I think the idea first is that, as I said, it's a good one, where that money would come from, so, Jim, I don't know. So, I, I, just so I'm clear and, you know, I'm the village attorney, so I work with the, my primary function is with the board of trustees, so are you looking at a sidewalk just on fronting State Road on the land that this development is going to be on?
No, we had talked earlier on the north side of State Road.
Where the, where the existing.
There's a whole bunch of, I don't know how they can right away, does it even have room for a sidewalk?
Yeah, and then plus, plus how much of State, that side of State Road, when does the, where does the village end and then all of a sudden you go to the town, so are you looking at a sidewalk from like Route two fifty to Phillips Road or?
Or the church, the church driveway maybe? You know, the, you know how the church driveway comes down on State Road?
Yes.
From there all the way to State Road schools, because there's already about a forty-foot sidewalk there anyway.
Well, that's on the other side now.
No, 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 it's on the State, on the school side.
Well, that's what I mean, so we're talking about the north side.
I was talking about, we talked earlier about the other side. Yeah, well, he doesn't control the north side, he only controls the south side.
Okay, fair enough, that's, that's an additional state.
Also, um, I see we have a lot of ponds, we need a lot of ponds, drainage is always an issue and every time, and everybody knows it, every time you have a pond, you have geese. Okay? Okay? Are you planning for that, the grass come all the way down on a nice slope right to the water's edge? 'Cause the geese love that.
No, we try to leave a buffer that's natural, 'cause they don't like to walk through it.
That's what I'm getting at, because, yeah, when you get that tangle of stuff, and people won't like looking at it, but it keeps the geese out.
Yeah, no, you gotta leave a buffer that's natural.
Okay, I work with the Friends of Webster Trails, so this, from this point of view, just south, I guess it'd be south of where that group home is, I think is a group home on State Road?
Yeah, there is.
Is what appears to be the most desirable piece of this whole parcel. There's a pretty good-sized woodlot in there, small forest, maybe, second growth, beech, maple, few cherries, stuff like that. I would like to see that preserved and incorporated into what you're doing here. You might have a few less units, but I'm sure people would pay more for a view to that or have it in their backyard, okay? Right up the road from here, we have Case Park, and I don't know how or when that got put in.
Shantestack, maybe?
No, Case Park.
Milton Park.
Case Park, right here in the village, right? A nice little walk through a few acres of the same thing, second growth, you know, trees. And if we could have something like that happen here, I think it would be great, if we could preserve that, as part of that anyway, instead of just clearing it all the way to the lot lines, the way this, the way this shows. And then, the drainage you say is gonna go out the southeast corner, pretty much go southeast, head northeast, it's all Four Mile Creek, right?
Eventually.
It all gets into Four Mile Creek, right, on easements and things? From the point of view of a trail, walking, biking, whatever, all the way from yours, I guess it'd be your southwest corner, I would like to see provisions anyway for a walking path across there to that easement, follow that easement, right? That easement's gonna go to wherever it's gonna go.
That's not a trail easement, that's just a sewer easement, that's just a sewer easement, not a trail easement that we're going into.
Not yet, no, but if it was...
No, it's an existing, it's an existing drainage easement, so you would have to get permission of the property owner.
Exactly, yes, yes.
Have a trail across their land, and they're shaking their heads over there that they don't think that...
No, I'm just, I'm just, you know, when you think about it, you could connect that along the Four Mile Creek, all the way up to eventually, I guess it'd be Salt Road and Ridge Road. From there, it's only a short hop to the bike path. So there's a lot of potential here for a through path, but not if it gets pieced off. So, if we could at least have part of it preserved, easement, you know, for that purpose, at least this there. You're shaking your head. Easements are impossible?
No, no, no.
Then why are you shaking your head?
You're asking for permission to walk on people's private property.
You can't do it when there's an easement, can't you?
But you gotta get them to sign the easement.
You have to get every individual property...
Yes, yeah, I understand that, but you've gotta start somewhere, that's my point. That's all, you know, preserve some of the woods and leave it as a walking path.
Just like they don't want the people walking across theirs, eventually it'd be homeowners that live here, that aren't gonna wanna walk, people walking through their backyard either.
Well, we have people walking down a road in front of our house all, every day.
It's a road.
Can I just answer that? I mean, okay, my brother-in-law, my brother, neighbor, all hunt back there now, which is probably gonna be ruined, because of the houses next door, and how far you gotta be away from everybody, and then to have people walking back there, we already have, over at the school, right next door to where I live, we already have people parking out there, we call the cops regularly, because people dump animals over in there, they're partying back there and everything, so, sorry, but I don't want anybody walking out behind the house in the field, it's just kinda scary.
I think all the deer and everything will come around the deer property, so something might actually do better.
Yeah, but you can't shoot them, because everything's too close. We'll pack.
All right, any other, yes, sir?
Yes, I'm Mr. Brian Quigley, I live at thirteen twelve State Road. I have a question, like, I have a storm drain at the end of my driveway, it goes right under the road across the street. How is that taken care of here, is that tight?
Is that, is that the big culvert?
Uh, I don't know, I'm not sure the channel, my house is right here, I've got a storm drain here, and it goes under the road, and empties out right here.
Yeah, I mean, it'll just, it'll get...
So that, will that be filled in, or will it just tie, or something use that on there?
Daylight here, go over the house.
The other question I have is, this road B, this section right here, looks like if there's cars traveling down this at night, it's kinda shining, I've got a big picture window up there every time people come, I don't want headlights shining and lighting up my whole house. Would it be possible to make sure there are trees, or shrubs, or something that will block headlights, maybe?
Yeah, these are, these are a couple of trees proposed.
Right, but again, yeah, just make sure...
But we can look at, we can keep that in mind, or lining up trees, that if it's coming straight down the road, we can line them up for you.
Perfect, that would be awesome.
Yeah, sure, be happy to work with stuff like that.
Okay. I think that's all I have.
Richard Waldor, twenty Elm Street, I've got a couple of questions, some of them for the board here, the first one, we talked about parking, well, I guess this is for you guys, I'm an empty nester, you could say, that because the nest was never filled with kids, but I'm in an age group that you're talking about, where's this project, and the board should look at this, too, where's this project gonna be in twenty years? In twenty years, most of us baby boomers are gonna be gone, which is what you're selling this to, is basically empty nesters, the big spurt of that is now the baby boomers, that's where the man's coming from. Where is this project gonna be in twenty years? Aren't we developing another area that's gonna be what Killeberger Park was fifty years ago? Most of you don't remember that, but it was not the best neighborhood. So, this is something that should be looked at. The other question I have is the parking, you say it's gonna be one, maybe two cars per family. I'm an empty nester, my wife and I, between the three of us, two of us, we have three vehicles, and I'm looking for a new travel trailer, because I just, within the last couple years, sold my old one, where do I put that?
We have restrictions that you can't have travel trailers and boats and things stored outside.
And with, I'm glad to hear they have basements, but I looked through other tracks, most cars with a two-car garage, you find two cars outside, and the grill, and a lot of other things in the garage, so parking, I think there should be more parking on the site. I see other developments that have an occasional extra area for parking.
We're looking to put in some supplemental parking on it, it's one of the common things that we've heard, is just adding some supplemental parking. Part of, too, what's nice about a townhouse community with HOA, is that people don't own the lawnmower, the tractor, the lawn equipment, all those things is contracted out, so the garages are pretty clean, and that's part of the reason why I live there, is they don't wanna own those things.
Well, I've read through other developments, that people find things to fill their garages up with. Yeah, not everybody, some people are pack rats, so I think somewhat more additional parking on the site somewhere would be nice.
And I welcome anybody to drive around Arbor Creek, and look to see if you see a parking, you know, that's the same setbacks we're talking about here, and we don't have cars in the streets, and parking issues, and cars outside, and these aren't problems that I ever hear about my residents, or the impression I ever get when I drive through.
Here's the only thing I'd ask you to think about there, under normal circumstances, I would agree with you a hundred percent of the time, however, nobody, it's kind of like laws, we don't make laws for most of us, we make them for the one or two people who we have to modify their behavior. We don't build these houses for the holidays, we build these holidays, these houses, or most of the time, like you said, retired couple, mom and dad, no cars, or two cars at a max. It's the one-offs that I'm most concerned with there, is what happens when you have a birthday party, what happens when you have something, you have a death, God forbid?
I've agreed with you that we're gonna look at putting some extra parking.
Yeah, you did, all right, fair enough.
But no, I have to say that even the way it functions currently, I haven't had residents complaining to me about how it functions as far as the parking, with the one-offs and the things that happen, and I don't drive through until I get inundated with cars, that it feels like a sea of parking.
We're gonna address it, that's good.
And I'm still gonna look at it, because the board asked me to, but it's not a problem where I'm currently developing a very similar community.
Understood.
Okay, and on the subject of sidewalks, which keeps coming up, I see absolutely sidewalks only on one side of the street, I live in the old part of the village, we have sidewalks on both sides of the street, and still find people walking in the road, even after plowing the sidewalks. So I would suggest, I would like to see sidewalks on both sides of the street, so that six-year-old doesn't have to run across the street, even though it's a small neighborhood, I know, to get to the sidewalk on the other side of the street. Traditionally, old Webster Village, sidewalks, both sides of the street, you can walk on either side and see either, any neighbor you want, without crossing the street, or have to walk on the other side, cross over, walk down, cross back, to see who you wanna see.
I'd actually like to answer that question. Based on our manpower, how many people we have, and the sidewalks being dedicated to us, we would probably rather have it on just one side of the street, because of maintenance.
Look at the town of Penfield, the town of Webster has just added sidewalks down one side of Ridge Road, except in other areas where there is more foot traffic, where they put it on both sides. Town of Penfield is mandating developers to put sidewalks on the main street, not in the development, but on the main streets, so that they can connect to other neighborhoods, eventually when they finish their project, which may be a hundred years, who knows? But I would like to see more sidewalks, and I would like to see the sidewalk connected to the village, right now it's only neighborhood. Is there any way you can connect it down State Road and into the rest of the village, or down Webster Road?
I don't believe in sidewalks in that, too.
Well, there's no sidewalks down Webster Road until you hit the village line.
I know.
No sidewalks in Lincolnshire, what, where would you like them to connect, Rick?
Well, I'd like to bring them into the village, right now they're only in that neighborhood, at least put a crosswalk somewhere so they can go into the Shantestack, or walk down to the school.
Which you just said, you didn't want the kids walking in the road.
That's why we have crosswalks, and stop signs, and caution signs.
Okay.
Okay, I think that's what I had there, thank you.
Ruth, thank you. We have an opportunity for anybody else? Yes, ma'am?
I just have one question about the basements, I know some of yours at Arbor Creek are walkout basements, are these gonna be walkout basements entirely? Seems like there's differences in Arbor Creek, there's higher points and lower points, and this one seems more flat.
There is a variety here, too, some of them are daylight basements that show four feet in the back, some show six feet in the back, and some will be on grade walkout, where it's fully exposed. There is a variety here, same way.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? All right, thank you very much, appreciate it. Now, we've got a couple of things to do here, first of all, according to Don earlier, we're not dealing with a preliminary site plan approval here, is that true? No, you are. We've got, we've got our... What proportion of us? The question is, I don't think I'm bad, but you would...
John, is the meeting still going on?
Yeah, it's all right. Let's continue with this part of the meeting here, so that we can give our business a little thank you. Go ahead. I heard from Kathy that she thinks, yes, we ought to be coming back, what are we coming back to?
They've heard the comments.
The board from the audience, so see what they come back with.
The proposal, what they need tonight is a direction on variances.
Okay, we've got the bad part, we know that.
Is it gonna go or not? Because that's gonna drive the whole, the rest of the project.
We do know that. So again, we're gonna ask you to come back with some of your responses on some of that, pending our next action, which will be, any action on the request for the variance, as I understand it, it's a fifteen-foot front yard setback variance, which extends to all pieces of property within there? It will allow you to have twenty-five feet to the front. Now, what I'd ask the board to do, is if any member would like to make a motion, well, first of all, secret review? Well, yeah, so you're not just talking about the area here. That is correct. Right? All right, well, the granting of individual setback and lotline variances, that's a type two action. So there's, you can take a motion, and if you fit to declare it as a type two, then by definition, there is no significant impact on the environment, and there's nothing else you have to do. When you get to the subdivision and site plan review, it's an unlisted action, and then it's gonna be more involved. Did I hear earlier that there were likely two variances, and are we gonna deal with the second one tonight? Well, I guess that's how you interpret this strange sentence in the village code under controlled site uses for townhouses, it says, one seventy-five forty-one C eight, access to public streets, in townhouse groups, no individual unit shall have direct access to a dedicated street. Now, what the heck does that mean? What? I have no clue.
What it says?
That's what it says. In townhouse groups, no individual unit shall have direct access to a dedicated street. Will, you're the code enforcement officer, how do you interpret that?
The way I would interpret it is that you have a townhouse building group, say you have five or six units in a group, you cannot position the building so that all of it be on like a private access, and only one of it have access to the dedicated road.
I don't remember dealing with this before, and I have seen some townhouse groups, I'm thinking of one right now. So in other words, either every unit has to be on a dedicated road, or every unit has to be on a private, you can't mix and match. All right. So in this case, so in this case, they're all, they're all either on a dedicated road... Or a private road, regardless of the action the village takes. So you don't need a, it's just a very strange way that's phrased. We don't have to deal with that, then, is that correct? No, it's just a one setback variance, well, it's actually a lateral, but it's all the same variance. That is correct. But, but those, but those as a group are still a type two action. So first, let's deal with the secret portion of that. Your job, Bill.
Well, make the motion, the zoning board is the lead agency for this matter, and a type two action, all is simple.
Give anybody a second, then?
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, zoning board is the lead agency, good, it's the only one we have, and it's a type two action. Now, let's, let's deal with the variance itself, the variance will read granting of fifteen-foot front yard setback variance. The variance will re-granting a 15-foot front yard setback variance that's like he has listed.
So before you, before you just go right into and ask for a motion and whether to grant the variance or not, I think, given this project and the amount of public comments that you've had, that you should go through individual five factors and talk about them and come to a conclusion and put it on the record and then take the motion. So if you take, if you take their letter of November 25th where they asked for the variance, they've got the five factors and, and what they consider the answers to those factors right in their letter. Care to look at that? Or you can go to, to, uh, 17577 of the code, page 175, colon, 86, and it's got them listed. First one, whether there'd be an undesirable change produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby property.
All right. So going through these, based on what we've heard already tonight and the comments that have been in place, we made grant variances and authorizations and, oh, area variances, grant area variances from the area or dimensional requirements. To make this determination, the zoning board of appeals shall consider the benefit to the applicant if the variance is granted and weigh against the detriment to the health, safety and welfare of the neighborhood or community by such grant. In making such determination, the board shall also consider, A, and we're going to go through these one at a time and I'm going to ask you all what you think of this. Do we believe an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by granting this area variance? Michael?
No.
No? No, all no's. All right. Can you elaborate? Why not?
Because they are creating the neighborhood. They are not doing requests of variance in the existing neighborhood. Therefore, variance that I personally feel would be in keeping with intensive project. Really, what, what the variance means is you need to have a bigger useless front yard or a bigger useful backyard. In my personal opinion, I'd rather have more privacy in the back than in the front.
Very good.
I love that because I agree.
Number two. Any other comments?
I agree.
All right. The benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance.
Unless he could double the lot size in some way, shape or form, I don't see an alternative option here. So I cannot see where they will buy a option, whereby he can achieve what he decides to achieve without the variance.
Okay. Third one, the requested variance is substantial. I don't believe that 15 feet in a setback variance is substantial. It exists in multiple other locations within the village and I don't think that it will create a detriment to the neighborhood itself, that the neighborhood being that unit or that subdivision.
I'm pretty sure.
All right. The proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district and the alleged difficulty was, all right, we'll go to that one. Go ahead.
The answer is, no, I do not see whereby an adverse impact is on the physical and environmental conditions in the neighborhood since they are creating them.
Well, actually, I, I think the environmental conditions, if everything is as was presented to us, might actually improve and that being the water drainage.
Correct. You're talking light pavement, less hard, hard surfaces.
And, and that swamp area along State Road that we've all seen for years. Okay. And the alleged difficulty was self-created, which consideration shall be, which, which, uh, which consideration shall be relevant to the division of, to the decision of the board of appeals, but shall not necessarily preclude the granting of the area variance.
Well, it was self-created.
It was.
The applicant freely admits it's self-created, but by default.
More green space and less, and herbaceous surface and.
And it won't have a detriment than, no, basically ones through four that you already went through.
Right.
And this, but.
This alone in and of by itself is not reason to deny the breath.
Right.
Okay. Now I have to, okay? I love it when he spoon feeds me.
I know. It makes it so easy here.
Well, we've, we've been here since 5:30. Okay, somehow, we told him it's a type two. Uh, do we have a motion on this?
I will make the motion for a 25-foot setback or 15-foot setback variance from the existing over guard 40-foot setback.
So we've got a motion on the table to grant a 15-foot setback variance to this project? Can Bill second even? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? All right, congratulations, we get that part done. That doesn't mean you don't have to come back. All right? That doesn't mean that you're good and that you got final site plan approval, right? Okay, we're good on that. You've heard our comments, you've heard the comments from our citizens in the community and, uh, what we'd like you to do is go away. In particular, come back and talk about sidewalks, see if there's something you can do with lighting, see what you can do about a traffic study that addresses more appropriately the impact on the traffic that this will have. That one seems to be a big one. I know that I've got a whole handful of notes here. What else did we want?
We'll look at parking.
Parking, thank you. Address the parking, supplemental parking. How was the light easement to the south?
What was the lighting look at?
The lighting, there were two phases there. Number one, what you were going to put in, number two, you're around it, you said you were going to go by the village standard, I heard discussions, round metal alloy, I kind of liked those when they were, and the LEDs, what are we putting in?
Just the village would prefer LEDs.
We would go with a village spec and an LED light and if there's more to do than that, then we'll work on it, but that's what I thought we were doing.
Yeah.
Like sodium.
And was avoiding also the power, power lights in the neighborhood?
Yes, that was a second piece, but the power lights.
The village is paying the electric bill on all these lights eventually, so you like LEDs, you're a lot more economical.
But again, the lights coming across, we have one gentleman who talked specifically about Road B.
Yep.
That's right? And then get the other ones as they're coming out either side because we had concerns from our citizens on the exit on two State Road and the exit on two, 250.
Yep, and we can definitely work on the Road B, that's easy. And then across the street is just, I'm willing to, when we get to the point of doing it, if they want me to put some trees, you know, I can agree to a number of trees, whether it's three trees or five trees, whatever it is, they can be positioned to their liking, but it's their property, so we can't really do much with it at this point.
Great, now all I want you to do is ask and if they say, no, I don't want anything, then.
Yeah, yeah.
So you keep saying it's their property and you say their property.
Across the street.
So, so again, you talk about like my property?
No. The comment came up directly across from this access.
Okay.
Oh, for that, okay. If there was a, a living room or something that we shined directly into, can we strategically place three trees or four trees or five trees or something that would help somebody?
Okay, my piece was on the other side.
Yours was on our property, we would light up trees to block yours.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry.
Trying to think what else.
The sewer easement to the south.
Sewer easement to the south, that is correct. Hold up one second. And I don't exactly, I know that it was mentioned. Do you have a comment?
Are you still taking questions from the, uh, the citizens?
Is it because I missed something?
No, no, I just had a question for the builder.
Go ahead. We're still open for business.
I do a lot of CAD drawings. Is there any way we could have a drawing of what we would see from State Road? That might help us all visualize it.
Did you get an elevation?
Um, well, I mean.
Is this it?
That's the elevation of a building, obviously.
She's asking if you're standing across the street on State Road and looking into this new development, what's it going to look like?
What's the panoramic view?
You can visualization of some kind of State Road view? Okay, I thought we did, you know, a, as we put thought and care into this, we put a lot of thought into giving a huge green space at State Road to avoid concerns and pushing the first building 170 feet off of the road, so.
And, and that might be fine. I think she just has a hard time on two dimensional of trying to visualize what it's going to look like.
Understood.
She may, they may not have an objection.
Right.
But it just makes it easier to actually see what it's going to look like.
Yeah, you would think that's just a quick button in CAD, but it's really.
Not that simple.
Really, really, really not that easy, yeah. If it was that easy, I, you know, I would say, sure, no problem, right?
Play the game, just put the button.
No, I can't.
I'm a teenager.
All right, what else, what else did I miss that we really want them to consider? I'm getting here, um, traffic.
Well, there were comments about doing the community center in phase one.
Yes.
And looping, looping the, the, the first road.
Looping the, you.
Consider connecting that first road into a full circle and getting the, uh, community center in there.
And when we talked about traffic, um, I think part of the disconnect was we provided a traffic study that you haven't seen yet.
Yeah.
So we already had a consultant do a traffic study, but it wasn't in the engineer's report. So I think the first step is just sharing that with you.
Perfect. And Will, you have it?
I think it was in an email.
We've been emailing you, Will, so we'll send it out again.
Well, and you, you got to disseminate it to the board. Did that work? Yeah, that's how, shoot, they actually got to read it. Forty-four days.
Thank you.
Forty-four days. All right, we've talked about a fair amount, anything else?
I got my list.
So when you're ready, let us know, we'll play back on preliminary again?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Anything we need to do with the, the seeker stuff you were doing? It's an unlisted action, so you don't need to do a coordinated review or 30-day anything, right?
No, well, we're going to send out a letter.
Well, I think, I think you could, at this point, as part of the preliminary approval, you can take a motion to declare that this board is the lead agency for subdivision and site plan approval and then Will can send out to the other involved agencies the, the notice saying this board's going to do it and if they want to object, they can or whatever. And then the other piece gets the seeker's process started.
Just, just that ball rolling?
Yeah.
So let's do that before we end. You need a motion to declare this board the lead agent for final subdivision and site plan approval.
I'll make that motion.
What he said. All right, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? All right, we've got that part done.
So then what will happen? You've got their long form EAF, environmental assessment form, you'll use that and then I had Joe give you the part two, which is the one that you guys got to go through and you basically got to, again, answer all the questions and say, you know, yes, no, whether there's an impact or not. And then based on when you get to the end, you determine whether there's a significant impact on the environment or not.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anything that we should pass you with that we're going to stand with your card? You got your laundry list?
I got my list, yep. I think I got it all.
Good.
If I, if I have questions, I'll, I'll bother Will or Michael, yeah.
No, you all good, but you don't kind of sort of got it all, you think?
She may have to listen to the tape.
Anything else next month?
Well, aside from the, you have a small property, small, the town of Ward, there are several parcels together, starting from, having these units. And he wants to move some boxes. He's going to need some variances because in moving along like he's creating.
Is he, is smaller or not, is the size large?
Always does.
All right, motion. We are looking at the third Thursday in. No, first Thursday. What? First Thursday or Saturday failed.
First Thursday, yes, we did decide that.
Yeah, we didn't decide that we were meeting the first Thursday.
I think they should decide if they want to meet the first or the third.
Oh, tell the other.
I thought we did too. Whatever their consent.
I'm sure you said first.
We did say first Thursday, so then we said that there was another thing where we had to come back, it would have been the third Thursday.
Mike, what do you like?
I like the first.
The first one.
Thursday, so.
Wait.
Is that why you're having enough time? No.
We're giving him enough time and it's not going to work quite crazy. What are you talking about there?
When do we want to have our regular scheduled meeting?
I think, you know, just because it was a holiday and the first Thursday, maybe you just wanted to do, well, this one was Thursday and then we'll discuss it then.
Future do a, a first of the month.
We'll have a democratic vote.
If it'll bring you better, you can sit a minute too late.
I think we're going to stare at it.
Okay.
And I will be moving in faster.
Well.
Come on, that makes sense too. We'll see if we can. No, I think, well, nothing's good.
Now, their first, their third.
I can, I can. I'll give him more time.
Are we? Mark? We'll have to adjourn.
Hold on a second, yes.
We still have to adjourn if we're, otherwise I'd need to keep taking off.
Okay. That's meeting on the 21st, that's the third Thursday in January.
And then, then consensus on after that.
After that, we'll decide that at that meeting, but we need a motion to adjourn right now. All in favor?
Aye.
Just keep in mind that we have to be consistent because we have to.
Governor Forman way back in.
We can't just be helping back and forth what we feel like.
Modified and open.
Final date. Or 21st.